Council meeting for the 28th of September officially open. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, that other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. To start off today, I would like to welcome Pastor Steve Rithmueller from the Cartwright Gospel Chapel, who would read the acknowledgement of country, followed by the prayer of council and affirmation, and then if everyone could please remain standing for the national anthem. Pastor, please rise.
The acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, and their ancestors, past and present. The Kaab Brugool and the Durrick Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Door, Ruwal and Durrick nations. I'll just read the affirmation of council and then I'll briefly pray. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. I'll briefly pray now. Our gracious heavenly father, I acknowledge personally that you are the only true and living God to whom we all have to give account. I also acknowledge that Jesus Christ is the only saviour of sinners, like me. Lord, we just want to also ask that today you will give wisdom to the councillors, to the mayor and others who may be involved in these proceedings. We just pray that the results will be good decisions, wise, kind and considerate decisions that are good for those, whether they're high or low, or poor or rich. We just pray, and I thank you also for all the councillors and the mayor, and for their service to this community. And I pray for your rich blessing upon them and their families, and also pray the same for the senior officers of this council and their families. And so, Lord, I just ask these things in the powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, pastor. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you, pastor, for your well wishes to all of us here. I'd now like to take this opportunity to, we have no apologies, and no councillor attending remotely, and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome back councillor Carneeb into the chamber. It is sure. It's glad to have you back with us. So, thank you. Good to see you doing well. I'll move to the confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Yeah, I've got a, I'd like to amend the minutes for the, well, there's two there. Thirty-first of the eighth, just NOM 01. If someone can yell out a page number, that would be appreciated.
What page of the agenda, councillor?
Fifty-four.
And what is?
It just, it's actually, yeah, fifty-six. So, it states here that it was, the foreshadowed motion was moved by councillor McNort and seconded by councillor Rhodes. My recollection was that I moved the motion and then accepted the amendments. And I went back and had a look at the video, and I've also sought advice from the officer local government, and they agree with that assessment.
Yeah, we're happy for the staff to look into that and adjust accordingly.
Otherwise, yeah, with that amendment, otherwise happy to support.
Yep, so move councillor Hadid, second councillor Hagerty. In discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against declared. And did you have something on the fifteenth of the ninth as well, or just for that meeting?
All good with fifteenth of the ninth.
Cool. It was moved, somebody like to move the minutes, move councillor Green, second councillor McNort. In discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against declared carried. Are there any declarations of minutes? Sorry, declarations of interest?
Yes, I've got one for NOM 01.
Yes, councillor Goodman?
My brother's a private certified, private building certifier, and I'll be leaving the chamber.
Yep, thank you. And that's a NOM pecuniary, let's, yep, thank you. All right. We'll now, we'll now move into the public forum, and I'd like to invite Ms Kerry Fitzgibbon, who'd like to address council on a DA matter. Ms Fitzgibbon, please.
Thank you very much, Ms Fitzgibbon. We have one condolence for today. As many of you know, that this month has been a very sad month. In particular, on the eighth of September this month, the Queen, the monarch of Australia, Elizabeth II, passed away. Elizabeth II was the Queen of England, United Kingdom and the Commonwealth realms from the sixth of February 1952 until her death in 2022. She was the Queen of thirty-two sovereign states during her lifetime, and fifteen at the time of her death. Her reign of seventy years in 214 days is the longest of any British monarch and the longest verified reign of any female sovereign in history. Elizabeth was born in Mayfair, London, as the first child of the Duke and Duchess of York, later King George VI and Elizabeth the Queen Mother. Her father acceded to the throne in 1936 upon the abdication of his brother, King Edward VIII, making Elizabeth the heir presumptive. She was educated privately at home and began to undertake public duties during the Second World War, serving in the auxiliary territorial service. In November 1947, she married Philip Mountbatten, a former prince of Greece and Denmark, and their marriage lasted seventy-three years until his death in 2021. They had four children, Charles, Anne, Andrew and Edward. When her father died in 1952, Elizabeth, then twenty-five years old, became the Queen of seven independent Commonwealth countries: the United Kingdom, Canada, Australia, New Zealand, South Africa, Pakistan and Ceylon, known today as Sri Lanka, as well as the head of the Commonwealth. Elizabeth reigned as a constitutional monarch through major political changes, such as the troubles in Northern Ireland, the devolution in the United Kingdom, the decolonisation of Africa and the United Kingdom's accession to the European communities and withdrawal from the European Union. The number of her realms varied over time as territories gained independence and some realms became republics. As Queen Elizabeth served by more than, was served by more than 170 prime ministers across her realms. Her many historic visits and meetings, including state visits to China in 1986, to Russia in 1994, and to the Republic of Ireland in 2011, and meetings with five popes. Significant events included Elizabeth's coronation in 1953 and the celebrations of her silver, gold and diamond and platinum jubilees in 1977, 2002, 2012 and 2022, respectively. Elizabeth died on the eighth of September in 2022 at Baumal Castle in Aberdeenshire at the age of ninety-six, and was succeeded by her eldest son, Charles III, now King Charles III. While what is a, been a very sad time for us here and as her subjects in Australia, we acknowledge her contribution to Australia and to the Commonwealth, and we're all, as many in the world, are sad at the time of her death. As I say, long is it, long live the, the Queen is dead, long live the King. So, if I could please invite everybody to observe a minute's silence. Can I ask someone to please stand?
We'll now proceed to the items in the agenda.
Sorry, Mayor, before you do that, can I move an urgency motion?
What is your urgency motion, councillor?
Whoops. It'll pop up on the screen shortly. Yes, there you go. So, recently came to my attention that we have about $40,000 in a matched grant that expires at the end of the financial year, should we not match the funds. We have an opportunity to up, I'm not sure if it would be framed as upgrading or delivering a couple of key facilities to ease the backlog of community demand for some of these cricketing facilities. So, my motion is to approve the matched funding on council's part for those facilities to commence procurement, and also to investigate any sort of policy blockages or process blockages to try and get grant-funded projects out the door quicker.
And why is this motion urgent?
Because, as you know, the cricketing season is about to commence imminently. The earlier that we can get the, sort of get the work going on this, the earlier that we can deliver these facilities in time for at least some of the cricket season. So, if we, I think it's in the motion, sort of about halfway through, the longer that we sit on this, firstly, the funding expires at the end of the financial year if we don't match it.
Of the, of the financial year that we're in, so?
Sorry?
The financial year that we're in, so nine months?
Yes, so funding expires in the, in the end of the financial year. My understanding is that the current blockage is that there is no allocation for such, for such a project in this budget, therefore, you know, some, something has to be done. And the longer that we sit on it, the higher the cost of materials and labour, and the lead time is approximately six to eight weeks. So, if we commence immediately, we can get something done before Christmas.
Look, on, I just want to refer to the directive of assets and infrastructure. Just going on, considering that we've got till the end of the financial year, and I get there's the cricket season happened, but on the, the issue of urgency, I just wonder if I can refer through the CEO. Does, what difference does this make when this happens now or follows the normal procedures, which would be done in, you know, the meeting at the, in the next, what, when is the next meeting, three, four weeks away? Are we going to build it by the time the cricket season starts?
We'll refer to the director of community and planning.
Thank you. Through the CEO, we've been working internally to source the funds, and the intention was to do a Q2 review, because we've been working with John Lack and Raj, the infrastructure and environment team, to get that done. So, the work is progressing, it's just, we've just got to do the formal process of handover to the, in terms of the facilitation of the budget, but the money can be readjusted in the Q2. In terms of building facility, I might have to hand over to my infrastructure colleague.
Through, through the CEO, in terms of the provision of the upgrades and the improvements that are the subject of this funding, we do not see any issues in terms of fast-tracking that. I mean, nine months is a significant amount of time in terms of the scope of works that are required, but like the director of community and culture has mentioned, in terms of facilitating the funding, we're already working towards making the provision as part of the second quarter budget, sorry, first quarter budget review.
When is the first budget quarter, review coming? Is that?
I'll refer to the CFO.
Through the CEO, the first quarter budget will be, review budget papers will be presented to the council in November meeting.
November meeting, yep. But from a, from a delivery point of view, moving this now, what, like, what, when would this be delivered, if you had to guess? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Through the CEO, if I could refer the question to manager infrastructure delivery, please.
Through the CEO, thank you, Mr Mayor, for your question. In terms of delivery, if we were to move the motion now, it would accelerate delivery by perhaps a month or two at most. If we were to make an adjustment as part of Q1 or Q2, we would still be able to deliver at this stage, before the end of financial year, although potentially not before the cricket season.
So, it wouldn't be before cricket season, is what I'm trying to?
I have to admit, I'm not too familiar with when cricket season starts exactly. If somebody could fill me in on that.
I mean, when is the cricket season starts now, doesn't it?
Cricket season starts now, but my, I guess my point is that at least we can get some of cricket season, rather than having to kind of wait for another, another year. At least we can get a few months of the season, rather than no, than none of it.
Can I just make a?
One, I'm hearing, I don't think I want to get any out of it.
Just make an additional point, that we pretty much have demand for cricket pitches all year round, as the director will tell you, I harass her and Craig almost weekly on the need for cricket pitches. It's not just the Fairfield Liverpool Cricket Association, there's community cricket comps, there's about two or three now operating in Liverpool that run all year round, so, and there's never enough cricket pitches. They want to come to Liverpool, they want to hire, they want to spend money, they want to give us money, but we don't have enough cricket pitches.
So, the, the issue that I have is, one, the funding source isn't identified. And I'm sure the CFO would like to know where the money's coming from, which, which part of the budget. That's number one. Two, councillors have, have said numerous times that, you know, there is the grants process, but, you know, but yes, we can put up notices of motion. I'm sure there's been many arguments in this chamber about, oh, it should go through the proper process and like everybody else, and we've heard that numerous times. So, this kind of goes against that, while everyone's trying to work, but as an urgency motion, I don't see how this as a NOM coming up for next month isn't the better way of doing this.
So, if I can just?
Because if you do, just so you know, so if you do this, then expect every month someone else to be doing urgency motions, you know, doing of similar sort.
Look, the reason why it's an urgency motion is I was only made aware of the kind of discrepancy after the close of submissions of notices of motions. Otherwise, I would more, I'd be more than happy to put this in as a notice of motion. But I guess the broader point, and that's why it's sort of tacked on as point three in terms of the recommendation, is that we, you know, earlier this council term, we said, let's go out, let's seek grants, let's help this council deliver infrastructure, particularly in terms of community facilities, and let's try and ease some of the backlog that our community faces. Here's a situation where our staff have gone out and done that, and the challenge is on our end. So, the terms of the grant is that it's a dollar-for-dollar matching. So, we're actually saving about $40,000, because Cricket New South Wales has said, we will match every dollar that you put in. And whilst, you know, there is about nine months to the end of the financial year, we want to try and make sure that we get maximum, you know, bang for our buck, forgive the pun, but maximum impact for our, for our local community. Because I'm sure other councillors are in this situation. I'm getting calls from community members saying, you know, the, the fields in Liverpool aren't great, we're having to go to Fairfield, we're having to go to Campbelltown, we're having to go to Camden. And I know, Mayor, that you don't want to be in that position, just as much as I don't want to. My concern also is that if we push this to the Q2 review, which is in November, we then have Christmas and the January summer break in the middle, which, as you, as you know, puts out timelines as well. So, whilst on the face of it, it could be a delay of a month or two, it could be a lot longer because of the significant impact on works that, that the December-January period has.
No, by all means. Look, I, from an efficiency point of view, right, you know, it's here, we can deal with it and get it over and done with, right? Because I think, I think we would be, everyone would be supportive of this, you know, I mean? The, the, and rather than bring it back and go through that whole process. But I'm just interested in the precedent, because, you know, it was only a few months ago that everyone jumped up and down about just bringing things forward and, you know, I mean, and allocating expenditure without any notice or going through the proper process. There was almost uproar in the chambers. So, I just wonder if we, if we deem this and deal with it now, when this comes up, because I'm sure there'll be plenty of people who want to do the same next month, whether there will be uproar.
And, and look, if they do, if they do, then it's up to you as to how you handle that as the, as the mayor, as the chair of the meeting. But at this point, these are some of the reasons why I have put this up as an urgency. If, if there wasn't the timeframe associated with Christmas and January, if it didn't affect, you know, a summer sport, then I would have put it up as a notice of motion at the end of this month. But I thought, given the timeframe issues, it's, it is urgent, in my, in my view.
Well, look, I'm happy to, I'm happy to deal with this one. So, let it go through the urgency motion, you just need to identify the funding source, please. I just remind councillors of what was said in this, because this will happen again soon, so. Can I ask through the CEO, an appropriate funding source, Mr CFO, to make the motion valid and legal?
Through this, through the CEO, the only funding source I can think of is the general funds.
So, could you add that on to your motion, councillor?
More than happy to.
No worries. Do you have a second for that? Second, councillor?
I might be to second it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, councillor?
Can I ask, so if we're putting a matching grant of $39,000 odd dollars, what's the total cost, though, of supplying three cricket pitches in the said areas, approximately with all of the scope of works that would need to be done and the soil testing, et cetera, et cetera? Are we ready to go, or, and how much more money do we need to, to find to deliver those in this time period?
Through the CEO, thank you, council, for your question. It's a very good question, and that's part of the reason why it's probably leaning more towards a Q2 adjustment at this point, rather than Q1, although we're still trying to see if we can fit it into Q1, because of those investigation processes that go in place ahead of the works to find the exact, the exact scope of requirements, so we can get a better idea and gouge of how much it's going to cost to deliver each wicket. At the moment, it's about $27,000, $28,000 per wicket is the estimate. But again, it's subject to investigation and a bit more firming up the details.
So, just, just one, one thing, I might want to, just if I can tack off, tack on at the end, point four, bring back to council a report on expenditure and the costs associated.
Sorry, through, through the chair, so you might as well just bring it back next month. So, if they're going to go away, do a, do a pricing structure, or how much it's going to cost, and then come back to council, that's a month away anyway, so you might as well bring the whole thing back in a month. So, why don't we result into getting them to investigate how much it's going to cost first? Okay, and then they can come back and we can move the motion then.
And it would give councillors greater opportunity to look at the different suggestives. We've got a suitable identified alternative to Island Park. Gives us more time to examine, as much as it's a good motion, but give us some time to consider it.
So, can I ask a question through the chair? Has work been done on the costs associated with this? Because from my understanding, that, that would have had to have been done when the grant was put in.
Yeah, I think, all the respect, council, I think, I assumed you would have done a little bit of inquiries before and before putting up a, let's spend forty grand without researching what that's going to get us. I think we need to be a bit prudently, yeah?
I'll refer to the manager of infrastructure.
Through the CEO, thank you, council, for your question. There's preliminary investigations undertaken already for pricing before submitting the grant. My understanding is that it's based off previous wickets that were constructed in recent past and using that price as a guide.
Which is $27,000 per pitch. So, hypothetically speaking, the forty grand, so it's eighty thousand. So, realistically, you can do two and a half pitches. In comparison, we're asking for three, is that correct? So, council's going to be spending more money on that?
My recommendation, councillor Caliander, is I think you should do the research and bring it back to the next council meeting with the right amount of money. So, I think, as I said, people want to support it, but it's now makes it hard to support if it's not even going to cover the three pitches. We need to know how much we need to actually do this. I think that's what councillor Moon's point is.
At which point it just comes back in November?
I think, maybe have a chat with the directors, you know, next few days and get it ready, so the, the right, the right stuff is there, and bring it and put it for the next meeting. I think it's, at least that way, it's ticked all the boxes, it's research, we know it's going to cover it. I think that'd be a more prudent way.
I would still like to put it up, because at this point, it's not so much.
Sorry, can you put on the, your microphone, please?
Because at this point, it's about trying to get the process started. So, if we can at least get some of, you know, the, the work started on this, then we can try and meet the timeframe of before Christmas.
Through the chair, the work's already started. They're already investigating, so the work's already started. What work do you want to start?
It's about matching the funding from Cricket New South Wales. So, they have put in approximately $40,000. We currently have not said that we will allocate that matched funding.
I understand, but what we're saying is let's find out how much it's going to cost us through the proper procedures, and then we'll come back and say, yes, we're happy to do two instead of three, and we can cover it through the grant.
Yeah, like you're saying, let's go buy three cars, but we're only allocating enough money to buy two cars. So, I think that's the, you know, if we need more, we need more money, we need more money.
So, can we just get some clarification from the director?
What was your, what was your question, councillor? Costs? Yep. I'll refer to the CEO.
I'll refer to the director of community and culture, please.
Thank you. Through the CEO, we, we've got quotes around pitches, and there were around $26,000 based on our previous work. So, the reason we've got $13,000 allocated for each pitch, because it's a matching grant. So, thirteen, roughly thirteen-two, they put in, and the other half we put in. That's where you get the accumulated funding. So, it's not going to cost eighty plus, as suggested, it's actually going to cost in total the forty, forty thousand. So, it's just now been working with, with our infrastructure team in getting that, in getting that, that matching grant.
I wonder if we can just change the motion around and put number four at the top, and have council to bring back a, a report on this, so that we can see all the facts and figures in front of us and know exactly where we stand. Would that be appropriate for you? Councillor Caliander?
It doesn't address the fundamental issue, which is?
Microphone, please, councillor.
Sorry. It doesn't address the fundamental issue, which is, how can we get, like, in principle, support from council to match the funding, so that we can get going on?
So, if you put in there point one, that council puts in principle support to match funding, pretty much word for word what you just said for this, and point number two, bring back the council report next month on the costing expenditure, to ensure that it's properly funded.
Yep, I'd be happy with that.
Cool. Did you get that? Is the second happy with that?
Yes. Well done, team.
Okay. If I'm sure we get the gist of it, we'll get moving on. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Okay. CEO. Great. Next item on the agenda is on page 82, CEO 01, the New South Wales Grant. the New South Wales Grants Commission Financial Assistance Grant Policy with the recommendation on the same page.
Happy to move that.
Councillor Hall, seconded deputy mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it unanimous. Next item is the election of the deputy mayor, which is on page 101. Page 101, with the motion points one and two. Point one, I'm happy to move that we do an open voting to view selection of deputy mayor and two, as per the book. Second that. Second, councillor Goodman. Open voting, yeah. Discussion.
Oh, that means I can't foreshelter that we're going to secret.
That you can't foreshelter, huh?
Yeah, we're all here, nothing's stopping us.
Other than transparency.
Democracy is about, you know, being able to vote in secret and that kind of thing. Yeah.
Pardon? Sorry, microphone councillor.
Sorry, Australia pioneered the secret ballot. It's a great method for determining deputy mayor.
Well, I'm happy to speak for my motion. I'm a firm believer in transparency and you know where you put your hand up. When we vote in this chamber, every one of our vote is put out there. So I'm happy to be transparent, show the community on the way that we vote. We shouldn't be scared of it. So yes. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. I'll now hand over to the returning officer to conduct the ballot.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The returning officer is delegated to George Jakakis, so he'll run the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Acting CEO. So in accordance with Schedule seven of the Local Government General Regulation 2021, I'll conduct the election of the deputy mayor. I have received nominations for councillor Haddid and for councillor Caliander. Just wanted to ask for any final call of any further nominations before we begin. There being no further nominations? Or are there? No?
Can I nominate councillor Rhodes?
Sorry?
Can I nominate councillor Rhodes?
You can. Is it in writing and there's councillor Rhodes?
I cannot see why councillor Hagerty would be nominating me, but I am very grateful for the thought. Look, I've totally enjoyed my term as deputy mayor and I appreciate councillor Hagerty's confidence in me. But I'm afraid that I believe that it's time for somebody else to share the opportunity.
Mr Chair, can I do Nathan? Can I nominate Nathan?
If you put it in writing, it's another secondor and councillor Hagerty has to approve it in writing.
Look, I'm very busy chairing the local migrant resource centre, being treasurer of local government, New South Wales, and a happy husband and.
Wonderful resume.
Very busy. Thank you, but no thanks.
Thank you very much. I almost regret asking for any further nominations. So councillors, can you please, I'll read out the names in the order they were received. So councillor Haddid was the first nomination I received. So councillors, can you please raise your hand if you vote for councillor Haddid for the position of deputy mayor? So we have the mayor, councillor Haddid, councillor Goodman, councillor Rhodes, councillor McNair, councillor Moon. Thank you. And now councillors, can you please raise your hand if you vote for councillor Caliander for the position of deputy mayor? We have councillor Caliander, councillor Green, councillor Carnib, councillor Hagerty and councillor Howe. On that basis, I declare that the deputy mayor for the term September 22 to September 23 is councillor Haddid.
Well, Mr Mayor, well, only one word, thank you all with no exception at all. And I promise you all as well, I will do my best and utmost to serve Liverpool City Council and the community in general in the best possible way. Let's work together for Liverpool. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Haddid, now deputy mayor. I would like to wish you all the best in your term. And I would like to acknowledge and thank councillor Rhodes for her work and effort as deputy mayor over the last nine months. You've been a great personal supporter myself in sharing the workload for the growing community. I thank you for the many, many, many events that you attended on my behalf when I wasn't able to get there. And really think you did a wonderful job and it was really good of you. And we had very positive reports and really thank you for sad to see not have you there. But I'm sure councillor Haddid has big shoes to fill, but he's experienced, he's looking forward to his first event tonight, so lovely. But thank you very much, I mean that sincerely.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and I congratulate councillor Haddid. I've enjoyed my experience as being deputy mayor, I've certainly learnt a lot. I've also learnt how much time and effort that goes into the position of mayor and I find it very frightening. So congratulations once again to councillor Haddid and thank you, Mr Mayor, for your kind words.
Well, thank you very much, councillor, and I would love to see you somewhere in the future. Thank you.
Sounds like a goodbye statement, but can I also join the mayor and former deputy mayor in congratulating our deputy mayor, Haddid, wish you the best?
Now we just have to change over the little plaque and, you know, it becomes official.
If we can also please have a motion as shown on the screen, a mover and a secondor for that motion.
Happy to move or second.
What's the motion? Oh, yeah.
Point's wonderful.
Moved. Whoever moved it first, councillor Moon, councillor Goodman, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. We'll now move on to page 105, which is CEO 03. Council representatives and committees, councillors, I'd like to move that we keep the representation the same except for West Rock and the South West Planning Panel on the basis that we're about to get a report.
Mr Mayor, can I just make note of the fact that I, no longer, as I am no longer the deputy mayor, there is a couple of committees that I would like to go on because I only attended them as the deputy mayor's capacity.
Yeah, which ones are they?
Okay, definitely the Autarit and Risk and Improvement.
Yep.
And Sydney Western Planning Panel.
Yep.
And.
West Rock?
West Rock, of course. And my previous Tourism and Events Intermodal and Animal Committee.
Yep. Okay.
If anyone else would like to step up to the, I think I'm an alternate on the planning panel.
On which one?
The planning panel. I think if anyone wants to step up. Yeah, and also the youth council. If someone wants to take my spot, I was just planning to be rather busy the next 12 months. And due to commitments, I haven't been able to make it as much as I can. So happy for someone else to take those spots if they want to, otherwise you can leave my name there.
I think we're getting the report on committees back next month? Next month?
Work it out then.
Work it out.
Okay.
Can I also point out, Mr Mayor, that the West Rock Committee, we do need directors that have got a business number.
Director's number?
It's a business number, I think it's called. And.
I got mine last night.
And we definitely need councillors that are going to turn up to meetings as there's been no attendance apart from myself for the last term.
Yep. Well, I think we'll, unless it was, Rock is not going to change if anyone's going West Rock. But yeah, I think if we defer it till next month till we get the report for the rest of the committees, we can deal with it all there and just make those changes as you asked.
Can we have any number of councillors that have got the business number that we require? One, two? You're going to get it.
All right, is there a secondor for that motion? Second, councillor Moon. Any discussion?
Yes, could I ask who's on the Western Planning Panel Committee?
South West Planning Panel, myself and in this, councillor Rhodes would like to be on there. And I think, whether you want to remain as an alternate?
Do I remain as an alternate?
Yeah, we're not changing, you're just alternate. And whether you want, I think you're an alternate now, Nathan, as well, do you want to just leave it? Leave it for the time being, yeah, okay. Yeah. All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it carried. Investment report, CEO 04, page 120, tab four, move councillor Hagerty, seconded deputy mayor, any discussion?
Just a couple of questions, very simple ones. The term deposits that we've got directed through the CEO, I know that I should know this, but when are they due to be matured, rolled over? And what impact is that going to have on our, because, yeah, what impact will it have? Yeah, we've got 44% in our term deposits.
Page 128 has a maturity date on all the bonds.
So. 128, you said, councillor? Okay, I'll.
Lovely, thank you. No further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare it carried. Next item is Plan 01, page 131.
I'd like to move the recommendation with some additional points, please, Mr Mayor.
Yes, go for it, councillor.
I sent those through. Should, yeah.
Happy to second that motion.
Second, councillor Rhodes. Any discussion?
I'd like to just point out that I understand there will be some costs associated with these reports that I'm asking for and that can be covered in the LEP review budget. So no additional funding. Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, through the acting CEO, yes. So I think it's 750,000 councils allocated for LEP review. So obviously we don't know the exact cost for those reports, but what we will do is through the procurement process do that. And if there's additional funding that is required as part of the broader LEP review budget, we'll address that with council through Q two or Q three budget review.
Thank you.
So through the CEO, if I can ask, what's the timeline on this? Because I think the community has been living in, they've had an element of significant amount of anxiety about, you know, when the trucks, when the plant will start operating and what's going to happen there. I know we're probably up to, what are we, year 10 years? Yeah, this has been going on. And I think since probably six years, seven years since council said, now we'd like to do something different with this local land. We now rule out residential, this report now states, and thank you for the report, that says, well, here are some options. You know, Liverpool is going to have 80 million passengers landing in it that are going to be looking for something to do. What is the impact, you know, I know this is, you know, if we're going with a DFO, Bergenhead Point on the water, which would be amazing on the river there. We need a retail hierarchy study that can support this as an outer centre development. Where, how do we capture in that sort of, I imagine we have to do a new, I guess, can you run this through the project process? I'm assuming we have to do a new retail hierarchy study. And how does that capture the, this as a regional infrastructure or shopping centre versus just the localised? And how does it support the pass the people from the airport?
Yeah, through the acting CEO, thanks, Mr Mayor, for that. Obviously, this report was put forward based on the previous resolution of council. Because it's a privately initiated planning proposal at this stage, what we were putting forward was a couple of options that the proponent may wish to consider going forward. With the resolution, sorry, the recommendation now, it's for council effectively to take over the planning in that regard. What we will do, if this resolution is passed, is we'll put together a project plan and a timeframe for that. I think that's appropriate so that we can fully understand how long it's going to take. I think that's the crux of the question, so that we can come back to council relatively quickly to say, all right, if it is going to transition to a council-initiated planning proposal, so council has control rather than the proponent, this is what it means. And that, excuse me, recommendation is simply saying, you know, pull together a report, not do a planning proposal right now, it may very well become a planning proposal. So in relation to your question about timeframe, I think what we need to do is, as a strategic team, come together, scope that out and come back to council within the next two months on a timeframe.
Lovely, thank you. And through the CEO, could we not, if we were to do some of the studies, I, once again, that retail one, we've done flooding galore on it, we understand that, we do the retail one. Could we not then just make that amendment through the LEP process and then just have these as supporting documentation as part of that?
Yeah, so there's a couple of ways we could do it. It could be included as part of the LEP review, but given that we've already proceeded with the LEP review, my recommendation would be, once we scope out that project and if council's minded to go down that and we believe that it has strategic and site-specific merit to be supported, we would deal with it as a planning proposal like we've done on a number of other LEP amendments. So it'll be not necessarily included in the comprehensive LEP review, given that we started that back in February. But it can certainly be an amendment to the LEP review. What we have to do is, obviously, those studies to demonstrate that that land use and the zoning is going to have the strategic and site-specific merit that's needed to be able to get a gateway determination. So that's the broad process that we would normally follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions, councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, I'm going to speak against this. We just had a debate at the top of the meeting about setting precedents on the council floor. I think this sets a pretty dangerous precedent myself. And I've had a couple of chats with the director about people that have complained about their zoning. And there's a survey up on the website about the LEP review and I've directed them that way. They've put their submissions in and I think that's the process. Furthermore, we already did a retail study as part of the LEP review. And it says right here in the notes, it is not recommended that this option is supported due to lack of strategic merit. So, yeah, A, I don't know why we're supporting option one, and B, I don't know why we're using the floor of council to do it. It's not the process, there is a process in place, it's the LEP review and we should be doing it that way.
I'd like to speak for the motion. I appreciate councillor Hagerty's comments, but council proceeds with further investigation into option one is the motion. The reason why I think this is a good motion is because I can see some sort of retail outlet down there on the river actually working. I'm dead against any sort of industrial or light industrial or anything industrial going on our Georges River. We've got enough of that, we've got to stop that sort of thing. We do have a problem about strategic merit with the fact that the government isn't going to do anything about public transport here in Liverpool until 2052. I know that that is a problem, but I think that we should be able to get a better result than 2052. That is just so completely outrageous. And we know that eventually the. And we know that eventually the, the matter of transport will be addressed. And therefore then this would be available in the long term. That's no reason for us to hold it up until two thousand and fifty-two on that strategic merit test. On the other strategic merit test, where it is about a retail outlet that is in competition with other retail outlets, I think that this could be an exciting new outlet that is not yet available. And, and unless we make it available, it probably won't be available. So I think that's a good strategic direction for council to go forward in. To me, looking at the options, looking at the land, looking at the problems, looking at the strategic merit, this is a good motion. And I thank councillor McNair for putting it up.
That's through you Chair, I have a question.
Yep.
I'm still not exactly sure as to the rationale for the motion. When you look at the notes in, in the report that recommend against option one, or, you know, highlight the lack of strategic merit in option one. Can we just have a bit more of an explanation as to the rationale behind option one?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a great question. Whose decision is it and whose opinion is it that that has strategic merit? And then are all planners, is that a science based approach that says that there is no strategic merit? Right? So is it black and white, like one plus one equals two? Is it, or is it subjective? And does it warrant further studies?
Through, through the acting CEO, it, it is a merit assessment against the council's strategic planning framework. So the, the local strategic planning statement, council's other adopted strategies, and of course, the ministerial direction. So we, we do an assessment against the proposal based on the information that we're aware of now. As I understand from the resolution that's in front of us, it's asking staff to go away and do some further investigations into that. I don't have a problem with doing further investigations into that as an option. But as has been identified in the report, based on what we've done to date, we have, as officers, we have some concern about whether it will meet the strategic merit test. But if what council's asking for us to do is go and do some additional, you know, particularly economic modelling in relation to trade competition and others, we can certainly do that and report that back to council with that outcome. But as it stands, and what I'm reading now, it's not actually asking us to change the LEP or prepare a planning proposal right now.
Could, could I ask a further question that, through the, the Chair? That when that report comes back, can you please also mention in terms of criteria on, on how that decision is made, what strategic plans overlap? So where it fits and where it doesn't, so that, you know, that we, you know, as councillors, we have a full understanding of the decision making process? Thank you very much.
Yeah, through the acting CEO, happy to do that, thank you councillor.
Sorry, just going back to my previous question. No, no, you're, you're fine. I think you, I, I think you may have misunderstood. I understand the contents of the report, I understand where the, the stuff are coming from. But, you know, given what we have all read, I, I'm not quite, I'm, I'm not, I'm still not understanding why there is this appetite to proceed with option one.
I'm happy to speak for the motion.
Pardon?
I'm happy to speak for the motion.
Yeah, just before, can I just say something? So, and I would, actually, I would like this part of table as part of the report. So in twenty twelve, council investigated changing the commercial core of Liverpool City Centre, which was an existing commercial core into a mixed use precinct. Council engaged a planner to conduct a report and do some research on it, Hill PDA, an esteemed planning company. That report came back and said, no, do not change the commercial core of Liverpool City Centre. It didn't have the merit, it should not be changed, it should stay the way that it is. Council then got another report from another planning agency and said, you know what? Let's make it mixed use. So you have two reports, two planners, one says it's a good idea, one says it's a bad idea. These are subjective. I would like that report, please, as tabled as part of this process. Ultimately councillors, we are the one who set the vision of our community. The, the vision is, we have a river precinct, which is non-accessible, not active, and has been talked about for twenty years, and all we have that's approved on there is a concrete crushing facility. And I can tell you one thing, you want tourists, councillor Rhodes talks about tourism all the time and the tourist economy and the visitor economy. You've got, you've got a whole bunch of people driving past that place, bring them down to the river, let them spend some money and create local jobs and get the trucks out of people for Morbank. So, but I just want to point out the subjectivity on, on those issues. But yes, councillor McNair, you want to speak for your motion?
I pretty much just want to say what you said, thank you, Mr Mayor. Is that we sit in this chamber and we talk about the river and we talk about how we are a riverfront city and how we should maximize that river for our community. So far, for the last ten years, the only thing the community's got there is a concrete crushing plant, as we all know. What this motion is about is asking for further reports so that we can challenge and lead this precinct to be what it couldn't, what it can be, an amazing riverfront precinct in Liverpool that we all want and we all deserve, and our community is crying out for. So I'm not, I'm not worried to, to lead this kind of exploration through the staff and the reporting mechanisms that will come back to us. We've, just because, you know, we've always done it a certain way, doesn't mean that we can't look outside the box to try to deliver for the community what we have been working for, for about the last decade. So I appreciate support for this motion to bring back what will inevitably be what we all envision, hopefully a riverfront precinct that we can all enjoy. Thank you.
Can I foreshadow a motion?
No.
Can I say something?
Oh, you're going to say, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just gonna.
Yeah, councillor Haggerty, yes, deputy mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor, well, look, to be honest with you, as a planning zero one is very significant planning, you know what I mean? So what I would say, let's have more investigation and have a, a community forum, talk about it, and come back to us, come back to us to make a decision. Don't rush, you know, this issue. And then don't, don't push forward, it's very significant planning. It will, it will change the whole face of, of Newbury draw their Morbank.
So.
Let's have more investigation, community forum, and come back to the council, okay?
So, 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 good point deputy mayor, can I ask the, the mover of the motion councillor McNair, whether you'd consider a point four, along the lines of saying that council continues to support the people of Morbank in their fight against the concrete crushing facility? And works to removing trucks from the area by limiting, you know, heavy industrial usages? And a point five, about holding, to the, holding a community forum with the community and asking them what preference they have for that area?
Happy, happy to adopt that into the motion, thank you.
Is the seconder happy with that?
Absolutely.
Councillor Hagerty, you had a foreshadowed motion?
Yeah, I was just going to foreshadow pretty much what you've got, except for points two and three.
Cool.
I just, given it says there's no strategic merit, we're doing the LEP review. It's not, say we want option one, let's continue to look for options. I think we all agree here, no one wants a concrete crusher plant. We want something that allows us to access the river, something that the public can enjoy. But let's not, you know, let's not assume what the best use is here. Let's, let's do the studies, let's engage with the community, and let's hear what they've got to say. It could, could end up being option one, but I think we're just jumping the gun a little bit, that's all.
Do you have a second, do you have a seconder? Councillor Caliander? Would you like your right of reply councillor McNair?
No, I think I've expressed my, my desires through this motion. And, and I thank councillor Hagerty for the foreshadowed motion. However, you know, based on discussion that we had earlier in the chamber, let's move things along, let's get things happening. So I'm very happy to keep point two and point three while we engage the community as well, thank you.
On that being said, are now put forward, the motion is moved by councillor McNair. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Wait. Yep. Against? I declare the motion carried. Next item is Plan Zero Two.
So happy to move that way.
So before we move on, can I just confirm that the foreshadowed motion will be noted in the minutes? Wonderful, thank you.
Moved, deputy mayor, councillor Rhodes, seconded. Councillor Harrell, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. You have to record this councillors, all those in favour, declare it unanimous. Next item is Plan Zero Three.
Happy to move that way.
Moved councillor Rhodes, seconded. Councillor Goodman, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Item, Plan Zero Four, page one eighty-two.
I have a motion for this.
Moved councillor, yes councillor Rhodes, what did you?
The motion would be a simple one, that we defer for a council workshop so that we can investigate the opportunity for actual lot sizes to be included into this procedure rather than bandwidths. I don't think that's going to do quite what we want to do.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Seconding councillor Goodman. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Sorry, all those in favour, please raise your hands, unanimous, thank you. Next item is COM Zero One, page one ninety-two, page nine. I'd like to move that this matter be deferred to next month. Seconded councillor Goodman.
Sorry, which item is this, COM Zero One?
COM Zero One, the draft impact social assessment policy and guidelines.
I'll foreshadow.
What is your foreshadow motion councillor?
As per the book.
Second.
I'll second.
Right, all right. In speaking for my motion for deferral, I've spoken to the director about this. Having a table which clearly articulates what the changes are in an executive summary will be of great assistance to be able to understand the exact changes of what's out there. Because I think for the community, for reading this, for us to read this, there's a lot to go through. And hence why we've asked for that deferral.
Well, should have done what I did and asked for a marked up version of the previous, of the, of the policy.
Actually should be in the report.
It probably should be, but doesn't stop people asking for it, happy to distribute it.
Yep. Sorry. Any discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. The, defer it. Against, declare it carried. Next item is COM Zero Two, page one hundred and ninety-six.
Move as per the book.
I'm happy to second an amendment for this. No, you can do it. I'm, I'm, I would like to amend, I'd like to add a point to the recommendation, which is that council provide a report on the costs and logistics of expanding this programme across the LGA into at least a North and South Ward type situation. As an example, I'm open to discussion about that, but I think this is a fabulous programme. But I would like to see the initiatives broadened, and it's been fabulous for the last five years in the two one six eight. But if there's an option to expand that to engage young people, I'd be very happy to see it. Sorry, that was a very long-winded addition.
Is the mover happy with that?
Happy with that, perhaps also including potential funding sources that we can use to potentially broaden it.
Yep.
Yep. So seconding councillor McNair, so investigate expanding the programme across the LGA and the costs and funding sources associated with it. Yeah, good, all good? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item, COM O Three, councillor Rhodes has a motion.
I have an amendment to this.
What's your motion councillor? Page two O Two, COM Zero Three.
Just in the last section of it, where it says be redirected towards events and the Liverpool LGA, I would prefer that the budget be redirected towards the establishment of Liverpool tourism printed and or lon, online tourism promotional material to attract national and international visitation.
Do you have a seconder?
Happy to second.
Councillor McNair. Yep.
I'd like to foreshadow a motion.
What's your foreshadowed motion councillor?
That council maintain the sister city relationship, full stop.
Do you have a seconder? Seconded councillor Harrell.
And while we're all reading, I'll, I'll speak.
Well, I don't know if the, let's see.
If Toda wants to do it.
There. I think this is, we're still maintaining the sister city relationship councillor, we're just not spending money flying over there and to go and visit them. I think that's because we're still saying we're not going to terminate the relationship.
Can I speak on my motion?
I'll change that to that council notes the report. There you go.
Councillor Harrell?
Can I put that into, obviously it's council notes the report because this was an addition to that report?
Councillor Harrell?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I have some issues with the report. I don't believe it's entirely clear as to the purpose of the Toda sister city relationship. It's not about a commercial thing at all, it's about students. We have fifteen students that come here, or used to come here, and in exchange. It was about relationships, cultural relationship, not a business aspect at all. And, and we've argued this in previous councils, where we were doing very similar to this, we were going to shut it down. I think that's wrong. I think the community gets far more out of this as students exchange and cultural exchanges than the money value. I don't believe it, it should be a money value at all. It should be the relationship that we've had with Toda for at least a decade. And I think it, you know, we had the problem with, with COVID. But I've, I've gone there, I'm not sure if you've gone there, Mr Mayor, at the time.
Nope, I've never been to Toda.
It was a wonderful thing that it was, and actually I'm embarrassed to a degree because of what they did for us and the lackluster performance we did over here for them. That was, was embarrassing to say the least. So I think, I think we should retain that. And the schools that were involved at the time, I'm sure that last year or the year before when we did this, there were fifteen students that we met and they were really, really impressed with us, as were our students with Toda. So I think we should keep the relationship going. It shouldn't be about dollars, it shouldn't be about what we can do for Liverpool. It's the cultural exchange that's important, as far as I'm concerned, and we argued that the last time.
Through the CEO, just wanted to know, what sort of achievements are we getting out of this? Like, what is Liverpool getting out of this still? Forget about the money, what are we achieving? If you, it's your, if you want to answer a council, a question from another councillor, it's up to the councillor.
I'm happy to answer that. What we get out of it is that we have fifteen students in an area in Liverpool that have very, very little idea of what happened in Japan or what happens in Japan. The, the exchange of those students, if you talk to those students, and I have, many of us have, most of the councils who were involved with this would have thought this was a wonderful idea. The students thought it was wonderful, the accommodation with the Japanese students, with Australian parents here, I thought that was wonderful. Now, all of those that were involved, I'm sure there was never any negative comments. It needs a lot of work and we did put in a lot of work. But overall, it was one of the greatest successes in terms of student exchanges that I've ever seen.
So if you were given a free flight and free accommodation, would you have said anything negative about it?
Can I speak to my motion?
Yes councillor. Yes, Council Rhodes.
Point of order, not all councillors were funded through council in the previous trip to Toda. I paid for my own flights and accommodation.
What exactly did you say, Counselor Amun?
I said if I had free accommodation and a free flight, I wouldn't have something bad to say about it.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, point of order. The insinuation here is that councillors are supporting this because they get a free junket, which is pretty offensive.
I didn't say councillor, I said I, there's a difference.
He said he would, he didn't make that any councillor, so. I don't, I think some people might be a little bit sensitive on the matter, but no, I don't see that as a point of order. Sorry, overruled councillor.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Counselor Rhodes wanted to speak for her motion.
I just wanted to ask a question. Is this the only way that student exchange is funded? Because I thought back in the olden days, when I was at school, very olden days, it was like a rotary type thing as well, but do councils now fund student exchange? Generally, I'm not sure, I'm just asking.
Can I speak through my motion, and I might be able to answer this?
Yep.
Look, I too was a person who participated in the Toda relationship and have encouraged the students and to get the students together to actually keep the Toda relationship going. But I point out to people that we are in a totally different economic situation than what we were before. People are not economically inclined to have the money. I know how difficult it was to get those students participating before because they have to scrape the barrel to get this money. Now, you will note in the report, it will say that, you know, that they have a preference for this to continue the relationship through a virtual online forum. So don't think for a minute that we're going to drop our association with Toda. Don't think for a minute that we're going to drop the Students' Association with Toda. But we have to understand the financial limitations that we are now currently in and people, the students, would find it very difficult to be able to find the money, probably back in Japan as well as here. I know as well as here because I was involved in the programme when it was done last time. So don't, please do not think that we are cancelling our Toda relationship. Toda says here, Toda has a preference for this model. Toda has a preference for this model. We're not doing anything to upset anybody. We're keeping the Toda relationship going, but we're going to be doing it virtually so that we're not encompassing families who can't afford to go anyway. And yes, Toda wants our association, our relationship with them, to continue through virtual means. So that's what this motion is all about.
Mr Me, can we just go to the floor and vote on this? It's just...
Yeah, happy, you want to put the motion?
Can I say a few words?
He's asked to put the motion, Monsieur. Counselor Moon's asked for the motion to be put, councillor.
If I can say a few words before you move the motion, I agree, mate, we had a long time, but look, to be honest with you.
I spoke to the motion, that's it.
Oh, right of reply.
Yes.
Till next time councillor. You can always send it and deal with it again if you want. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is Infrastructure, oh, Division, fantastic. All those in favour of the motion, please stand. Those against? Thank you. Next item is Infrastructure 01, page 207, Council Rhodes.
Yeah, I just have some questions about this. And the first one is on page 210. Item 100457, the tennis courts in Big Park. Did we ever find out the support to have tennis courts in Big Park? We probably did, but it's been so long in the running. I can't remember if we did a survey, a community survey or something like that.
I'll direct the question to the Director of Infrastructure and Environment.
Through the CEO, thank you councillor for that question. I don't actually recall we ever second guessed the need for tennis courts at Big Park, so I'll have to take that on notice and get back to you, but that's not my recollection that we ever sort of desired to change use or do something else with that site.
So I don't know where that places us. Should we be finding out from the community first whether they want the tennis courts there before we proceed with that?
Again, through the CEO, so the need for sporting and recreational facilities are determined through the council's council adapted sports and recreation sports strategy and that determines, I guess, the expansion, the upgrades and the provision of facilities. So, and that guides the renewal programme, which is basically what this programme is about, about renewal of the and upgrades to the courts, the surfacing and everything else. So if there's a, if there's a view of council that there should be an alternate use considered, then I think from a delivery point of view, we've actually advanced quite a bit to a point where it could be a point of no return, but we can get back to you on that. But there has been no consideration other than to continue provision of tennis facilities in that space.
Okay, the next one is on page 211, the 102607. And this is for the Environment Education Centre. My question there would be, the money that this, the funds for to do that particular project, it is limited in certain ways. How, what are the limitations on that fund?
Thank you for that, through the CEO, thank you for the question councillor. So firstly, we are preparing a briefing for the full council on the context, the background and the need for the environment of council's own Environment Education Centre. So that's, that'll be presented, I believe, at the upcoming strategic panel. But you're quite right in terms of the quarantine funds, it's under the environment levy and it has certain restrictions as to the scope of that funding. But in terms of provision and maintenance of ongoing operation of an education centre, it is fully within the scope of the environment levy, if that is a question.
And that will come back to that meeting that we're going to have, thank you for that. And the final one, page 212, item number 103024, Rose Street. I notice in there that we've got items in there like to fix the truck wash. I'm a bit confused because I know we've got another proposal that we're looking at of a possible another site that may already have that facility. Are those items that are included in that, is that locked in concrete or are they movable if they're not required?
Through the CEO, thank you. It's a very fair question councillor. So this programme was developed long before the alternate option came into, in our view. The budget and the programme is about, I mean, you've got to appreciate that the parts of the building and the facilities are in a fairly dilapidated state and this is about restoration, roof restoration, asbestos removal and the range of... So I think for the foreseeable future, those works will still be relevant. But this is about carrying over of the funds into the new year. That's something, the ongoing need for that funding and for the works, we can review that as part of the next quarter budget review and come back to council as part of the November budget review process now that we know about the plans for an alternative site.
Thank you, they were my questions. I'm happy to move that.
Moved, Council Rhodes, seconded. Counselor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is Infrastructure 02, page 213.
Happy to move that way.
Moved, Counselor Hagerty. Seconding Counselor Carnib. Any discussion?
Would any of the councillors have an objection to that being deferred? Just so that I can make sure about what is in that policy and climate action?
I'm happy to support it.
Come to council, it's gone out for 28 days, we've had briefings on it, I think we just get on with it.
I'm happy, if you move a deferral councillor, I'm happy to second it.
I'll move for a deferral so that we can really examine it, to make sure that we've got it right. We don't want to move this and then bring it up again because we've missed something or whatever, so.
Yeah, I'm very interested because, you know, going through this, you know, council says if you go on a, if it changes to EVs, there's a 40-year return on it and a 3%, like there's some significant issues in this and I guess I would support understanding and going through it a bit more, such that...
Sorry, through you, through you Chair, I have a question. This is the second time that the Policy and Action Plan has come to council. This is the, this is following a 28-day public exhibition. If there were any concerns or if there was, you know, things to be highlighted about it, surely they should have been done before they went out to public exhibition?
No, I think it's come, well, you know, my concern is when you look at, only one submission has been made out of 220,000 people, one submission, which means it hasn't probably been consulted wide enough. It hasn't, people wouldn't know about it. Because if people care, if there's a climate emergency and they care about climate, you'd think there'd be more than one person who would have put something forward, at least in support, if not against it, so. Well, you'd normally, at least you would put it there, but you know, so we're not saying go back out there, but I think that's... That's a, that becomes another issue in itself, but I, yeah, I think there's, yeah, such an important thing, yeah? I'd be interested. So, sorry, there's a, any, is there any further discussion? So just a point of clarification, do I have to move, do I move the deferral first or move the motion first?
Motion.
Motion. Alright, no worries. So I'll move the motion that would be adopted first by Counselor Hagerty. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion lost. Now move the motion for deferral, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. We're now moving to committee minutes, committee reports. Division, yeah, division, no worries. Which one do you want to divide on, the deferral? Yeah, no worries. Alright, all those in favour of the deferral, or? All those against the deferral? There you go. Against?
That's against, now wait for...
For the deferral, sorry. Say, we're giving Counselor Carnib a workout here today, it's a...
It's all part of the...
Recover, rehab. Yeah, thank you. Committee reports.
Happy to move as a whole. Couple left.
Happy to second.
Yep.
One I'd like to speak on.
Yep.
The tourism one.
Yep.
Probably in general, the name, I attended that and my name's not recorded. And I thought we had a policy of where councillors attend committees, whether they're on that committee or not, their names are recorded. The reason for that is council has to do a, an annual report and that annual report records the attendance of councillors at all committee meetings.
Yep. Sorry councillor, it should be recorded, as an attendee, everyone should be recorded. So we'll get that fixed up, if I can have someone note that. Great. No worries, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Like to move that we have a 15-minute recess and get back at 3:45. Thank you everybody. Meeting resumed. Questions with notice? Does anybody have any issues from the questions?
Happy with QWN01.
Yep. Counselor Harrow? O2?
Compliance matters. I just wanted to say, the reason I raised these two questions was we needed a report so that we could show what I believe is the councillor's point of, the council staff's point of view on those two issues. I must admit that in social, the comments made in social media do not reflect those report answers here. I'm disappointed in some of the comments that were made on social media where staff was accused of things that they didn't do. So hence, that's my reason for these. I won't go further than that other than hopefully this clarifies both issues. Thank you.
Counselor Hagerty, all three?
Yep, looking forward to the training being rolled out. I'll give the state government credit on this one. I think the Attorney General, Mr Speakman, said this will give New South Wales the strongest whistleblower in disclosure laws in the country and I think that's very, very welcome. And yeah, looking forward to having those in place because as we've seen, whether it's state or federal, it's important for public servants to speak up and make disclosures when they see things that are happening that shouldn't be. So more power to public servants, I say.
Counselor McNaught?
Thank you, yes, happy to wait for that response, thank you.
Counselor Rhodes?
Yes, I thank the council for their report on this. And I thank council for not going with the racism, not racism, not welcome here. I think we've seen a lot of what has happened about that particular, what would you call it, messaging and the programmes that were, it's causing a lot of division within the communities and disturbances within councils. But I'm still a little bit confused about the Safe Here Programme, which is again presented by the same community, the New South Wales Anti-Racism Working Group, which is an initiative of the local government multicultural workers network campaigns. Because the problem that we've got with the Safe Here Programme is that it's exactly the same programme as Racism Not Welcome Here, except with a different name. But the thing that bothered me mostly about this was the proposal to put stickers on shop windows suggesting that you're safe here in this particular shop, which poses the question that you're not safe in every shop. And I find this a little disturbing because Liverpool council has been advocating, and I know that the local Police Command has told us so many times that our Liverpool CBD is one of the safest CBDs in the whole of South West Sydney. And we have been promoting very hard at this council that the safety perception about Liverpool is exactly that, a perception. The statistics do not hold true to suggest that we are an unsafe place. And the Safe Here Programme tends to be running in exactly the same vein as the No Racism Not Welcome Here. It is suggesting that there could be racism problems and in this one, it's suggesting that we're not safe. So it's undoing all the hard work that council has attempted to do, well, ever since I've been on council, to get rid of the perception of Liverpool not being a safe place. So the video concerned that they were doing with this programme still remains a bit of a mystery because I'm told that the video was approved through the normal communication channels and the video shows council staff participating in the video. So that is sort of presuming, or one has to presume, that council has approved the Safe Here Programme. And that bothers me for the reasons that I just told you. The Safe Here Programme being rolled out... The Safe Here programme being rolled out in the Liverpool CBD is doing us harm when we've been trying to do so much to stop the, the false perceptions that Liverpool CBD is an unsafe place. So considering that this has been the second time that this particular group of people, the New South Wales Anti-Racism Working Group, has tried to run these sorts of programmes, I'm afraid I've lost all confidence in them, and I certainly don't want them to be able to come up with another programme that isn't run through council and, and all of a sudden we've got some other initiative that is perhaps not in line with Liverpool's strategic directions, where we are directing ourselves. So I'm not happy about it, and I do have a motion that I would like to propose if I'm able.
What is your motion councillor?
The motion would be that council cancel their membership and engagement with the New South Wales Anti-Racism Working Group, an initiative of the local government multicultural workers' network campaigns, so as to avoid being negatively impacted by their agendas that are not in the best interest of Liverpool and outside the strategic directions of council.
Do you have a second for that? Second, councillor McNaught. Councillor Caliander?
I would like to speak on this. First of all, the, there is a significant difference between the, sort of the Racism Not Welcome Here programme, that was actually an initiative of Addison Road, which is a not-for-profit based in Marrickville, and secondly, the Anti-Racism Working Group, which is a working group of the multicultural workers' network within local government. It, the, the Safe Here programme is modelled off of a similar programme that is run by ACON New South Wales, called Welcome Here, which basically aims to visibly show members of the LGBTQI plus community shops, services and other spaces where they are welcome to acknowledge the fact that there are many spaces where they don't, they don't feel welcome. So I would make firstly that point. The second point is that we know that many people who experience racism, who experience attacks based on their cultural background do not report to authorities, because they feel like it won't be taken seriously, they, for a whole number of reasons which are complex and may not be appropriate to get into here. And the third point, with all due respect, I think it is extremely inappropriate for someone who is not likely to be the target of racist attacks to determine and to tell people on the floor of council what they should and shouldn't be offended by. I myself have experienced racism on streets of Liverpool, that does not mean I don't love this community any less, that does not mean that I will not work to improve what people have access to, but frankly speaking, I feel incredibly offended that the people who are putting forward something like this are not likely to experience racism, are not likely to experience the distress that may come with it. And secondly, there are, there has been a conversation on this within the youth council, where people, where members of the youth council came up to me afterwards to say that they had been on the receiving end of racist, racist attacks or racist comments. So I think it's extremely inappropriate to cancel a membership of an organisation that seeks to address the needs of people who may not have a voice in our broader community in this fashion.
So, thank you councillor Caliander, councillor McNaught?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I understand the passion behind what's being said here on the floor of council, however, I, I don't want anyone to make any presumptions about how people are made feel in the community, regardless of their ethnicity, their gender, their racial background, their beliefs, we shouldn't be making assumptions about anybody. My, my main issue is that if we pick and choose sections of our broader community to highlight as welcome, to me, we're saying that the rest of the community is potentially, can, can see that as being not welcome, or the people that we are picking and choosing to say are welcome, you know, may, may, why, why are they not welcome everywhere? Why are we not working to make everybody feel as welcome as each other? And, you know, why do we need to define this? We are such a multicultural society in the South West, we live harmoniously, we live together safely, and we know that through the police statistics. So why are we creating a division where we don't need to do that? That's my issue with, with popping safe labels or, or any kind of labels on people's windows, regardless of the fact also that, you know, if you, I, I don't, I don't know what goes behind, any, any more than the sticker that says Safe Here, what does that really mean? Are the people inside trained in safety if something's happened to you criminally? And does that indicate that other people aren't trained in that way? I mean, it's not an all-in kind of, kind of programme. I, I don't, I don't like the division that this, that this is obviously causing by the conversations that we're having.
Could I suggest that part of the problem here is that there is a misunderstanding as to what the Safe Here programme is, and that you, there can be a lot of assumptions made on what it actually is. I, very well, the ACON-based project that was in, that has informed this, when my time at the Women's Health Centre at Liverpool, we went under the training as much as we want to, and I get, that's the utopia that we strive for, that everyone in our community is respected and welcomed everywhere, but we know that in the lived experience of people of colour, of marginalised communities, lesbian, LGBTQI is not the case. So having a space where somebody who is feeling overwhelmed or attacked or whatever, uncomfortable, can identify that sticker, go to that, that shop front, that organisation for support, but I think, and, and there is, there will be, it's based on the ACON programme, it does involve training, but I think underpinning all this is that there's been a gross misrepresentation of what the programme is. So I would suggest that there either be a information pack or included in the councillor briefing exactly what this programme is. I think it's, it's a bizarre step to cancel membership for an organisation that is community-based and working towards building community capacity for a cohesive and welcoming community.
Councillor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There is no misunderstanding, perhaps what we are seeing here is issues from other people's communities being brought into Liverpool. I go to citizens' ceremonies and I listen to the mayor saying, you know what Liverpool does best? Multiculturalism, because you're welcome here. This is one of the places that you know that you are welcome, you are safe, and we love you to be a part of our community. Now, this is the, the messaging that is said at every citizen's ceremony. And then they go out into the streets and they see a sign, and we seem to be getting confused here about whether this is about the No Racism Here or the previous one. Council said no, they could at least see that there was a negative issue that we were inviting into Liverpool that didn't need to be here. So that's one issue, we said no to that. This is safe here, this is the issue, another one, and it's telling us that we're safe, you're not safe in the Liverpool CBD, which the police statistics deny. They tell us we are safe here, they tell us we are the, one of the safest CBDs in the whole of South West Sydney. We, we do not want, we do not want to bring in other people's problems into Liverpool, we've got to support our strategic directions. We've been fighting for 10 years to make Liverpool lose its perception of being a safe place, it's a hard job to do. We do not need to invite in somebody who has got no idea about Liverpool, because if they did have an idea, you know, they would have known that, well, our Liverpool CBD is one of the safest CBDs in Liverpool. They would know that council has been promoting itself along that vein, that we are one of the safest CBDs in, in, in the whole of South West Sydney. I see nothing but negative connotations and creations, divisions and problems that Liverpool does not need, and I stand by my motion.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Well, that was my.
That was a right of reply councillor.
So I asked, I asked that it be put.
In that case, can I ask a question?
It's been, she's had a right of reply, you've had a chance to speak councillor, and she's asked the motion to be put, so to follow the protocol, I have to put the forward the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Okay, next question, 06. Think you need three, don't you, was it two or three? Three? Anyway, yeah, two. All those in favour of the motion, please stand. Against? Declare the motion carried. Question 06, councillor Caliander?
I would like to ask a subsequent, or a follow-on question to that one. Can a further report or further information on the fees or the costs of the shuttle bus be brought back to the next council meeting? Or can, can they just be taken on notice?
We can put that on there, as part of that, could we then get a usage report of every month, of how many people are actually using the service and where they're going to, so we understand, just to make sure that maybe the route might have to be changed? Yeah, so we can.
Sorry, and can we get a comparison to pre-covid figures as well? Because I am conscious that with a lot of businesses going back to being in person or, you know, more intensively requiring parking and that kind of thing from the beginning of next year, the downturn we've seen over the last few years might actually kind of right itself.
Can I see the actual motion? What is the motion?
Oh, just, she's just adding question.
Questions.
No motion, just.
No motions.
Start by taking it on notice. So it's like getting the cost and getting figures about usage.
Yes.
Councillor Caliander? Oh seven?
That's fine for the time being, I'll bring something back.
Can I, can I just ask to, to the CEO, we know, we obviously have a lot of migrants, new Australians coming here, you have a lot of young population, and they both, those categories, people don't have experience, you've got people who may, sorry, may not tick all the boxes. What can we do to help provide, I guess, employment opportunities that, and I think this is part of the transition, we all know the stories, people who have engineering degrees are driving taxis, right? What can we do as a council to provide employment opportunities, to help them get their foot in the door? Happy for you to take it on notice, but I think it'd be.
Yeah.
Apologies, Mr Mayor, I'd have to take that on notice, director of corporate services is not here today, so apologies about that, but we'll take that on notice.
Can I just, can I just add, and I think it probably covers that, Mr Mayor, the question you asked, I've had some personal experience with this, through people that I've met, and, you know, the, the, you know, that when you're applying for a job from, from a refugee background and you don't have any experience here, it can be difficult for people to then get a job because they haven't got any local experience, and ways that we can, and I'm pretty sure it's what you said, but ways that we can assist them to get that, you know, the pathway into employment to get the experience, because they've got the qualifications but they don't have the local experience, and it's difficult for them then to, to move forward, so that'd be awesome if we could get some information around that.
Sorry. Did we mention another opportunity that I think that we should be looking at is, you know, the, the people who are down and out, the homeless people and, you know, those people who have been long-term unemployed or something like that? If we can just see if there's ways that we can give them the opportunity to reset their lives, I think that would be good for Liverpool as well. So if that could be considered, that would be great as well.
Yeah, that's a good point, like, yeah. Very, very good point. Next item, councillor Caliander, 08.
Happy with that response.
Okay. Presentation by councillors?
I have a presentation.
Oh, two presentations, lovely. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and through the Chair. My report is about West Rock. This year, West Rock has undergone a structural change by developing two advocacy groups for West Rock, the Central Centre City and the Western City. I've been elected Vice President of West Rock and Chair of the Western City Advocacy Group. We held our first Western City Advocacy Group meeting via Zoom on the 18th of July 2022. At that meeting, we confirmed and created new issues requiring West Rock advocacy. We reaffirmed urban heat, climate change issues, including Cool Suburbs Toolkit, the Urban Heat Planning Toolkit, climate resilient tools, and assessing the BASAC's thermal standards for homes to address possible extremes in temperature. Energy efficiency, including the endorsing of EV fleet transition and charging pod rollout, street light LED exchange and renewable power purchase agreements. Regional waste strategy, including forms on how household organics waste services in apartment buildings might be updated with planning controls. And running litter management and illegal dumping prevention campaigns, and the Love Recycling Campaign to assist residents to recognise soft plastics and sort them out to reduce recycling contaminations. Finally, we've been successful in gaining West Rock advocacy for place-based tourism opportunities, which is very significant for Liverpool, and cities surrounding the new Liverpool Airport due to open in 2026, which I might add is in our LGA. Our most recent agenda item submitted by the Western City Advocacy Group was for a possible employment platform available to all member councils to address staff shortages. The Western Sydney advocacy enables any councillor, not only those who are councillors elected to West Rock Committee, to submit any issues for consideration or inclusion onto the Western City meeting agenda. Councillors elected to West Rock Board must have a business number, and realising not all councillors are not prepared or committed to doing so, I advocated to permit, to permit all councillors not elected to the West Rock Committee to be able to submit their issues and ideas to the Western City Advocacy Committee and to attend those meetings as guests, and particularly to advocate for any submitted agenda item. Through greater attendance at meetings with all councillors contributing their ideas, Liverpool has a unique opportunity to maximise its advocacy through South, uh, West Rock. We know that the issues of South West Sydney is our job to advocate through West Rock for favourable and beneficial outcomes for our LGA and that of the Western City. I'm aware that some agenda items have already been submitted from Liverpool Council for the next Western City Advocacy meeting on Thursday the 28th, and that's a, that's a Zoom meeting, and it only runs an hour from six to seven, so I would thank you for your participation. I'd also like to advise that Liverpool City Council will be hosting the West Rock Board of Directors meeting on Thursday the 17th of November at CPAC, starting at 6pm, and I hope all Liverpool councillors will attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hagerty, your presentation?
Yes, don't worry. Got some, I've got some bling, but don't worry, it's, it's just a sort of hand to, there, there, look at that, beautiful stuff. About, I don't know, about three or four months ago, I think we approved a grant for Southern Districts medals, so I was at the, this is for their knockout competition, and I happened to be at the Under-13s Boys Knockout, where the Liverpool Olympic, my son's team ended up winning, very proud dad. But also there was Andy Favallaro, who's the president of Southern Districts, and he thought, oh well, since there's a councillor here, I'll, I'll give a couple to council to give back and show the groovy stuff that we paid for. So there's where our $5,000 has gone, but I can tell you, judging by the, the smiles on the, on the faces of the kids and the parents and the coaches and the managers, and the parents and the coaches and the managers, it was, it was an excellent day and well worth the money. And even though it was pouring down raining, I'm sure everyone had a, had a good time. So I don't know who I hand those to, but there you go. Tina, they're yours.
They make good decorations for the council's room, I think it's. Maybe to George. Thank you. Councillor Hagerty? We will now move to the notices of motion. Another say, nom one, private certifiers, and councillor Goodman indicated he was going to be stepping out of the room for this, so maybe we'll wait till he leaves. Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, look-
Are your colleagues okay?
I'm not sure.
Oh, we've lost them.
Check.
So-
If you can please close the door, councillor Goodman, or, can you close the door? Actually, he's gone for a cigarette, so I think he'll be out of the area.
He can't hear us? No? Okay, there we go. All right. This one came about after I saw an article about George's River Council and having a chat to a few councillors around the traps, that this is not just an issue that comes up in Liverpool, it's an issue that comes up all the time. I know councillor Harrow's raised it, I know councillor Rhodes has raised it as well. Where resident rings you and they go, oh, you know, neighbours are doing a knockdown rebuild and this and this and this is happening. And you report it through to council and they tell you, we can't do anything about it councillor, it's a, it's a private certifier. So essentially what this is about is, I guess, trying to improve that system to make sure that there is some clarity there around both what we can and can't do. Giving the building commissioner some, some more powers. But also making it clear to residents where that line does and doesn't finish. So a lot of the time we get the blame for things because everyone just assumes everything's councillor's fault. But this is an opportunity for us to inform and empower our residents and send them in the right direction. So I'll leave it at that.
Do you have a second or for your motion? Second to councillor Harrow. Did you want to speak something, councillor Harrow?
Yes, actually I wanted to ask a question.
Go for it.
I've also been an advocate of trying to do something about private certifiers, which obviously causes us major hassles. And sadly, it costs us money and sometimes a lot of money. Is there any way, and I've, I've read the report, this may not be possible, but is there any way that maybe council can get part of a private certifier's fee? So that we can offset our costs of investigating and, and, you know, checking to see if the work has been done correctly. Reading the report, it appears we can't do that, but maybe there is some way we could lobby to get that done, because I think it's highly one-sided at the moment. Councils allow to investigate any issues, simply because it costs us money and we can't do it.
I think it was called a compliance levy councillor. It was called a compliance levy. So hence, when you lodge a development application, regardless of who is the, the principal certifying authority, compliance levy can cover that part cost, which we don't have anymore. And so councillor Rhodes?
Yes. Thank you councillor Hagerty and, yeah, okay, we've, we've done this all before, haven't we? And that's my difficulty that I have. I'm totally behind it councillor Hagerty, but how many times are we going to submit the same thing? If we keep doing it, we're going to get the same result. I would rather take a different tact and I can foreshadow a motion. And the motion would be, I agree with your first point, that we should review the information on our website in relation to the construction activity and certification to ensure information is comprehensive in plain English and clearly outlines the current avenues the community member can follow if they have concerns with a site by a private certifier. But I would, I think that it's time that we change our tact. And the second part of the motion would be for us to hold a workshop to consider new strategic directions regarding the approval process and compliance of developments in the Liverpool LGA. Where we consider amongst other things, and these are just suggestions, other people would have other things that they would contribute. But we should perhaps be considering the possibility that council no longer process development applications beyond holding pre-DA meetings and must be requested and exchanged by a CPC who is advised of the necessary compliance with all the council state, councils state regulations as well as pre-payment of financial agreements for VPA and contributions necessary for a certificate of receipt and registration could be issued by council. So we register it, we make the agreements about VPAs and arrangements for financial situations. But all the utility, bushfire, flood, zoning checks and planning approvals would be the responsibility of the CPC. But we require approval by planning panels and council before an authority to commence work certificate can be issued. Now, this is just my ideas and I'm sure planners would have different ideas. A final authority to occupy certificate would be the final check by council to hold CPCs accountable. So I know it's a bit long-winded, but I'm tired of putting up the same thing and is getting nowhere on it. I think it's time that we at least held a workshop and we had the opportunity to rethink things. Rethink, what's the point of us taking the blame for the things that the CPC is doing? Let's, let's give it to them. Let's think about that. I would like a workshop for us at least to be able to have a discussion around it and put our heads together and see whether it would actually work.
We just need to adjust the first dot point. And maybe if we use the word hypothesize.
Hypothesize?
Hypothesize versus council no longer processing. And maybe instead of processing, assessing?
That council-
It's a, no one's saying not to do it, it's saying it's hypothetical scenario. What does the world look like? Yeah, so not saying we don't do it, just saying, asking for a workshop, so I guess.
And of course, this would have to be lobbied, just as we've got to lobby what we've lobbied before.
Yep. Do you have a second for that? Second to councillor Moon? Yeah, I just-
Just a question.
Yes councillor?
As we are aware, the private certifier, it's a state government issue first of all. So the question is, does the state government or the planning department do a random inspections?
Do what, sorry?
Inspection. They do?
My understanding is they do through the Building Professionals Board, I think they're called, and which is now, I think through Fair Trade, Fair Trading. Sorry Deputy Mayor.
A regard of the council. Do we do that as well? Just to make sure everything-
I'll refer to the, to the CEO. His question was, does council also undertake any inspections?
Okay.
Thank you. Through the acting CEO, we take inspections, we undertake inspections for developments where we're the PCA, where we're the certifier. If it's a privately certified development, the certifier takes the role of the council by law. So council has no involvement in inspecting those developments. And if we do get complaints about whether a development should have been approved as a compliant development certificate or there are issues with compliance with the CDC, compliant development approval. It is the certifier's statutory responsibility by law to investigate that, enter issue orders etcetera. And council, you know, where we do get complaints, we also do call the certifier and say, hey, you've got a complaint coming your way.
So in case someone made a complaint to the council, what do you do in these cases? Just refer it to the state body to deal with it?
Correct. Through the acting CEO. So we do get complaints, which we do quite regularly. And I know a number of councils do, because you contacted me about them as well. The law is that the certifier who issued that CDC or construction certificate and is undertaking inspections is responsible by law to undertake that in an impartial manner, much in the same way a council certifier does that work. Council doesn't have a statutory role to jump in, so to speak, and override the certifier. The certifier is responsible for all elements up to the issuing of the occupation certificate.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks everyone. Look, I'll now put the, I'll put the motion as moved by councillor Hagerty. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against?
Sorry, can we just have a minute to read the motion?
Sorry councillor. I declare the motion lost. I'll put the motion as moved by councillor Rhodes. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is nom 02, page 276, councillor Rhodes. Councillor Rhodes? Can I, are you just moving the motion?
Yes, just moving the motion as-
Do you have a second for the motion? Second to councillor McNaul. If there's, if there's no speaker, does anybody want to speak against the motion? Oh, sorry, councillor Goodman. If there's no speakers, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Next item.
Division.
Division, yep. All those in favour, you're standing, all those in favour, please stand.
He's against it because he doesn't like me.
This was two. Two. Again, those against? Thank you. Next item is nom 3, councillor Rhodes, page 279.
Yes, again, the same motion with an extra point. Provide oral histories of people who have grown up and or have long associations with Lene.
Yep, thank you. Happy to-
Sorry, can I, can I add something to the motion?
Pardon?
Can I add something? Yes. Given the fact that Phillip Park has a significance in our local First Nations community, I think it would also be fitting to have Aboriginal art or, you know, work with Gundengara to make sure that heritage is included in Phillip Park.
Yeah, it's, my understanding is that's already happening.
Can we make, can we note that in the motion?
Are you happy with that councillor Rhodes?
Is it already happening or is it something we have to do?
I'll refer to the CEO.
Well, it's already happening councillor, so leave the motion as is. But we'll check up to make sure that we see Aboriginal art up there in the-
Yep. And I, councillor, if I can say-
Through the chair, can we get an update on what that will look like at a, at an appropriate point?
Yeah. I'm going to take that on. Thank you. Okay, wonderful. Wonderful. Okay, I'll, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hand.
Have we got a second on that motion?
I'll second it, yes. Against, declare it carried. Nom 04, page 21, councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, look, I had my say about this one last month. I'd like to think that, you know, people in our area go to the best possible-
Sorry, one second. Do you have a second for the motion? You're moving the motion as is?
I am.
Yep, seconder, councillor Kineeb. Discussion, speaking for your motion?
Yeah, look, I'm hoping I get the support of councillors on this one. This is about ensuring kids in our area go to the best possible schools they can. There is land, I understand there is land earmarked next to the public school. From what I can understand and speaking from people who know about this, the high-rise school at Arthur Philip, which happened, this actually does have a bit of open space, unlike this one, has been a failure. You know, when the, when the bell rings to go for the next period, kids get stuck waiting for the elevator. You know, a two, perhaps even a three-storey school is adequate. But a high-rise, you know, nine-story high, high school with no open space and a retail component is, as far as I'm concerned, unacceptable. So I'll leave it at that.
Right. I'd like to move a, an alternate motion. Foreshadowed motion that we support and congratulate Schools Infrastructure New South Wales for their investment in school infrastructure in the Liverpool LGA. And to support the vertical school model that is being proposed and that will be a world-leading educational establishment and facility in the Liverpool CBD.
Happy to second that motion.
To, second. Yeah. In speaking for my motion, I'm, pardon, oh, sorry, I'll speak against councillor Hagerty's motion. The, with regards to, I'd be, I'd be interested in the comments that you made and if there's any data to support that versus, you know, hearsay. So I'd be interested what that says. Having met with the, having met with the, with the CEO of Schools Infrastructure, their, their proposal is, the proposal of what is being, the school that is being planned in the Liverpool city centre, the vertical school, is going to be a world-class leading educational institution, right, right here in the middle of the CBD. The opportunity to go from primary school to high school, to go to TAFE, to go to university, to go into the, into the health system and be trained in a different fashion and gain an education in a different fashion is something that will be the envy of the country, if not the world. There is amazing research and work being done on it and this is an extremely exciting opportunity. This can only be done through a vertical environment. You know, they're obviously getting better, not saying that Arthur Philip is perfect and that nothing is perfect. But, you know, I'm sure there's opportunities to improve and make it better. And, you know, if we, you know, we're looking at a, probably a $500 million investment there, plus what's happening in Edmondson Park, plus the opportunity to discuss in Austral, other schooling opportunities. You know, these are great, you know, also we're working with Schools Infrastructure about sharing facilities, open space. So these even present more opportunities for us that we can, open space can be provided. So these are, these are great initiatives. So I commend Schools Infrastructure on their, on their way of thinking. Any other speakers for or against?
I will speak against councillor Hagerty's motion. I think that we can use Liverpool as an example. We've got five schools in our immediate CBD area. And the, the real estate becomes more and more valuable as cities progress and as they grow. So I think that vertical schools going up enables in Liverpool the opportunity to use that available space for other facilities that would progress the city. So I honestly believe that Edmondson Park should be taking a page out of Liverpool's growth and history and realising that the same thing is eventually going to happen out there as well. And I think that vertical schools will become the norm in the future. So I think that, that, I think that I can't agree with councillor Hagerty's motion in view of those issues.
Any other speakers for or against? Councillor Harrow?
Yes, for. I, as an ex-teacher myself, I find that having taught in TAFE colleges where we do have those vertical school models, particularly in Ultimale, there are no recreational facilities for anybody in that area, yet they built that many years ago. The other thing is, if, if you look at the- if you look at the, the Edmondson Park model, there's obviously lots of, lots of land around there where you could have recreational facilities for students to spend time outdoors, not just in an air-conditioned building, as they are in vertical schools, going on the model that TAFE built many years ago. I think it's a shame, in this country, we've got so much open space that we are trying to fit us into little boxes into an area and cram us in there when we really don't need to do so. I think it's wrong and I just fail to see the sense in doing that. Nobody's built one of these vertical schools yet to see the impact on society. I doubt very much if it will work the way you're suggesting it will.
Thank you. Would you like a rate of reply, councillor Hagerty?
Sure. I'm not talking about a school in Liverpool CBD. I'm talking about a school in Edmondson Park. So that one sort of threw me and I was a bit confused by that. But I'll make the point again. There is land on the northern side of the train station that was earmarked for a public primary school and a public high school. Schools Infrastructure, who, you know, the boss of Schools Infrastructure thinks he's doing a good job. I'd like to hope he would think that. But what they've decided is they're going to build across from the shopping centre, a nine-story building, no open space and a retail component down the bottom, when they've got land across the other side of the station with large open tracks where you can have playing fields, places for kids to run around, which is a perfectly good high school. This is not a partisan issue and, you know, this is not about, you know, let's just vote, let's just vote down party lines here or whatever. This is actually about giving our kids the best possible education we want. We've got an airport on the way, we've got an aerotropolis on the way. We're doing fantastic work here, building pathways from high schools to TAFs and unis to really good jobs that are coming out in the airport. We need to give our kids the best opportunity possible and that starts with the best possible schools. And the research is pretty clear. That means having open space and not having kids turn up to class late because they've been waiting 15 minutes for the next elevator to go from level one to level nine.
Thank you. And I'll put the motion as moved by councillor Hagerty. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion lost. Now I'll put forward the foreshadowed motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Next item is councillor Harrell, NOM 05, page 284.
Thank you. It's fairly self-explanatory. At a recent planning panel, the chairman mentioned that in the development application that became before the panel, it was a high-rise building and it was suggested that there were going to be electric vehicle charging stations there. And the chairman suggested that maybe it's a good idea to incorporate the electrical cabling requirements into any high-rise buildings so that in future, that infrastructure is present at the time, rather than have to retrofit it at an exorbitant cost. And so that's really what this motion is asking for, that in our DCP and in our LEP, we look at ways of ensuring that the developer puts in the necessary infrastructure without having to retrofit it later. There are other implications there. Electric vehicle charging stations require a relatively large amount of electricity and it then also means that the area, the supply to that area needs to be, the infrastructure for that needs to be ensured that it's there. It's no point having the building capable of having 250 kilowatt charging stations if the electricity supply to the building isn't sufficient in the street. So that needs to be looked at, hence the DCP and the LEP. And I thank the director for the information he gave me, Mr Smith, David Smith. Thank you.
Is there a second, councillor Green?
Councillor Rhodes? Totally agree. It's a big problem, isn't it? How these things are going to be rolled out? The problem that I've got is that I think we're jumping the cart a little bit. It's difficult to put it in, make adjustments through our LEP and DCP until we know exactly what we are dealing with. There's a lot of variables. We know that it's going to raise the cost of apartments if we put this in. There's a lot of things that have to be considered. But I do know that it's a very, very important motion and I agree with the issues that councillor Harrell has raised in his motion. But I would prefer, and I put a foreshadow motion, that council engage with West Rock's investigations into the rollout and roadmap for EV charging pods and present a report back to council. All the moving parts have to be addressed. There's, how do we do this for units? Of course, that is a big one. That is a very big one. What cost is that going to increase the cost of the apartments? And what sort of effect is that going to have on our Liverpool constituents? So all these things have to be addressed. But more importantly, there's no point in Liverpool doing, all our planners being given to do that work if West Rock is already engaged in it. And we're a member of West Rock, so let them carry the expense of the investigation. So, yes, I agree with your concerns, councillor, but I think that there is a right way of doing this and I think that we need to look at all the moving parts before we can actually start to talk about what we should be doing in our LEPs and DCPs. So I'll leave it at that.
Do you have a second for your motion? Councillor Moon?
Just questions to my colleagues in this regard. But councillor, are you sure Wesrock are investigating this issue?
Yes, West Rock is engaged in this issue. Actually, I, I actually attended a meeting with West Rock on this very issue with the minister Chris Bowen. So conversations are already taken.
Do you know, do you know the investigation already done?
Where we're going with it? No, this is what I'm saying. All we've identified is how difficult it will actually be because there's too many moving parts.
Sorry, councillor, can I just ask councillor Harrell, are you happy to have your motion sort of merged into this? That we, we see what Wesrock is doing about this and report back to us?
Look, I didn't know about the Wesrock issue. I have spoken to Wesrock Corps, I forget Corps, the director of Wesrock, spoken to him about these sorts of issues. But this is so new and I agree, we need to look at it carefully. But we don't have much time. We should not allow buildings to go ahead without considering that infrastructure at present. So I'm, I'm, I don't really care whether you incorporate that into it as long as the issue gets addressed.
Yeah, well, then councillor Rhodes, the point is that there's a lot of work, rather than council start doing this, starting from scratch, doing this research. Wesrock has done a lot of this work, because this has to be, let's face it, this is a regional, if not even a statewide and national issue. Yeah, you know, we can just tap on, tap onto that if you're happy with it and get a report back to council in a few months' time. Do you want to, sorry, I just refer to the CEO.
So I can confirm Wesrock have invited us to participate in analysis process, project. It's going to cost around about $23,000 and take up to 14 weeks to complete. They're going to lead it and we just need to provide a whole heap of data and we're involved, and if we get involved, we're involved with other councils as well in this same vote. So I'm just writing an email now from Wesrock.
Versus what will it cost us then to, I guess, replicate that level of research that they're doing or?
Well, firstly, it would be a matter of resources if we've got that. And then from a funding perspective, I'd have to look into that. But, you know, right now we're stretched with resourcing. So having someone like Wesrock lead this through their engagements would probably be a smart way to go.
Just a question. The Wesrock initiative, is that about having charging stations that are, you know, in sort of commercial facilities, sort of public ones, as opposed to councillor Harrell's suggestion, which is when people come home from work and they park at the bottom of their apartment, there's charging facilities there?
It's the whole gamut.
I'll ask the acting CEO.
Yeah, it's a good question. This is around electric vehicle fleet transmissions in general. And I'm assuming, without having read the detail, it may involve that or not. I can't give you a definitive answer, but I can take it on notice and come back to all of you because I've just got the email coming today.
All right. Yep. Now, look, I'm happy to support this one because whether we like it or not, electric vehicles are coming. I think there was most major, actually all major car manufacturers haven't done any R&amp;D on combustion engines in about 10 or 15 years. So they're gone, you know, before we know it. Australia's a very long way behind. But it creates bigger problems, which we're talking about today, which is, okay, if the fleet's going to go electric, we need to look at what that does to the grid. How does that work when we get home? We all plug our cars in. I've got a investment property down in Melbourne, which is a unit, and we had this big argument at our Strata meeting because there were two charging stations. And you get, I guess, an issue there with the tragedy of the commons, where I think there's one or two cars that, one or two people that have electric cars, they use all the energy, but the bill goes to the Strata. And we actually couldn't work out how to solve the issue of splitting it, so we actually got them unplugged. So we were all for electric vehicles and we all want to charge our vehicles, but we couldn't actually work out that problem. So I'm hoping that this is the kind of stuff that Wesrock tackles because whether we like it or not, it's coming. But we have a whole bunch of tough questions and problems we're going to have to sort out before it gets here.
The CEO?
Polities councillor, the analysis will take into account fleet charging strategy as well for council?
As well?
As well. So not necessarily for other sort of outside commercial real estate, but certainly for our operations.
So councillor, I think councillor Harrell, if you want to proceed with your motion as is, this needs a funding source because it's not a, it's not a budgeted position that we have. You know, and it requires, it requires, it requires work and effort in to do it. We can do it potentially through the LEP review or we allocate 20 odd thou, what was it, 20, 22? $23,000 and tap into the Wesrock research, which is a bigger pool of funds that's doing probably a better body of work in reality. So which way would you, do you want to go there?
I'm happy with whatever decision ensures that this issue is looked at. We do not want to be a position in the future to say, we should have looked at this. We should have incorporated the necessary infrastructure into the buildings when we had the opportunity. So I don't mind whichever way it goes, as long as it's considered, irrespective of who pays for it.
Cool. Can I, can I then say that if you then take that sort of, basically your point one and councillor Rhodes, point one is the same, oh, is it? Sorry, I can't see.
They've already moved my point into councillor Harrell's emotion.
And so point three needs to be then allocating $23,000 from general funds to join in, to participate in the research.
And you would need to change point one, just to investigate suitably. So take out through the LEP and DCP review at this stage. Suitably and take out, yeah. And if it's of anybody's interest, I approve of my foreshadow motion going into Peter Harrell's motion.
Okay, great. I think we just advise that we should maybe just make it up to $25,000. We need GST, you never know. All right, great, wonderful. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. Declare it carried. NOM?
NOM 6, yeah, look, I'm.
Six, page 286.
I might withdraw this one pending the answer of these questions, the following questions. Paramedic Council has a policy and they refer to the Graffiti Control Act. Doesn't refer to the Graffiti Control Act in here. But when we talked about other, I think we referred to other, so which include the EPA Act, Level Government Act, Impounding Act. Are we aware or have we ever used the Graffiti Control Act in relations to call for signs on public property? I don't know who I'm looking at.
And so are you withdrawing your motion?
It depends on the answer I get to this question.
Probably going to take it on notice, I would bet.
We'll take that on notice, sorry.
All right, I'll withdraw it, but I just, I have to say, our, our, our public realm is becoming very unsightly. You know, you've got some real estate agents just putting their own metal posts in the ground and putting up signs at this point. And the thing that ticked me off about this was a particular, one particular sign that was attached to the Indigenous signage that we had run a project on a couple of years ago. And I found that a little distasteful. And once someone puts it up, that encourages two, encourages three, four, five. And the public realm is not a free space for you to advertise. If you want to advertise, pay the money, do it on Facebook or wherever you want to advertise, TV, 2GB. Don't use public space. Thank you.
The motion is withdrawn.
I have some questions, if I may, just for councillor Hagerty's further investigation into this, perhaps?
He's withdrawn the motion.
He's withdrawn?
Those questions, I think if you've got questions, councillor, can I recommend that we just submit them to Mr Jodakis for him to take them on notice?
All right, okay, we'll do that.
There we go. We've got through the NOMs now. Now, we now have the confidential items. Is there anything that anybody wants to go into closed session for, to discuss?
I just have one, conf 02, it's questions.
Yeah, okay, so let's, we'll go through these one by one.
Same. I've got questions on conf 02. Great minds think alike. So.
Another compliment, I'll do it well.
Yeah, if you, if you ask it vaguely, we don't have to go into closed session, so. Okay, that's fine, no worries. It depends, no, it's whether you want to discuss it or not, if you want to go into details and have questions.
So happy to move conf 1.
Yep.
Conf 3 and conf 4 and conf 5. If nobody's got any, any things to move with that.
Let me just go through it one by one, please.
You're going to do one.
So, conf 01, page 393.
Happy to move.
Moved councillor Rhodes, second to councillor Harrell. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried.
Can we?
Conf 2, we defer that to go into closed session. So we'll just, we'll defer that. I've got a conf 3.
Happy to move that way.
Page 44, councillor Rhodes, deputy mayor, seconded, all those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Which one did we, which one we put, conf 2 we're doing, we deferred, right?
Yes, so conf 3 we just approved and.
Conf 4, page 413.
Happy to move.
Moved councillor Rhodes, second to councillor Green. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Okay, conf 5.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes, seconded, councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Conf 06, page 509. Moved councillor, deputy mayor, second to councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is conf 07. Move it. Move deputy mayor, seconded. Seconded. Councillor Mun, any discussion?
Which one, Sees?
Conf 7.
Oh, 7.
Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Yeah. The...
So I move that by the meeting, gas to closed session.
Under section? 10.2. Point... Thank you, David. Section 10, it was an A, there was a 2. DI under Lot Government Act contains commercial information of a confidential nature that afford, if disclosed, prejudice the commercial position of the person who supplied it. Move that way, seconded. All in favour? Against, declarate carried. Thank you, everyone. If you can just give us a few moments to go through this confidential matter?
Can I add to that through the mayor?
Yeah, go for it.
You know, and I agree with what you're saying, councillor. This, this has been a big issue. But from what I hear from the, the residents who objected to this and put the campaign together, they, they're very, very happy with council's help. And the other thing is that I'd like to congratulate is the council section that put the social impact assessment policy together. Without that social impact assessment policy and the bite that it had, we would not have won either of the cases. So it was the social impact assessment policy that did that. And all thanks go to the independent assessor on that, Dr Alison Zilla, and I forget the other lady's name, who put that together and made sure that it had the bite that it had. So congratulation, council senior staff, you did a damn good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, now that we've moved into open session...
Can you please have that noted as well?
Yes, please, yes, I can. So Walston, closed session, council moved that, number one, approve the transfer of those parts of Lot 13 deposited D249818 as identified by the provisions of the voluntary planning agreement, English, Cooper's paddock, work farm, to the respective adjoining landowners. Two, keeps this report confidential pursuant to provisions of section 10A2DI of the act, Lot Government Act, because it contains commercial information of a confident nature that would, if disclosed, prejudice the commercial position of the person who supplied it and authorize its delegate officer to execute any document under power of attorney necessary to give effective decision. Four, that a report be submitted to council every two months regarding the status of VPAs. Five, five? The five was that we have a briefing session regarding this DA, regarding this VPA urgently and the other, other outstanding VPAs. I'll be input, the motion was carried. Well, thank you, everyone. I now declare the meeting officially closed. Thank you.